Grand Central School District Board of Education, Tuesday, May 19th. It is 7:35. All board members are present with the exception of the president who is on her way. I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
And we will go to item 1.04, modification and approval of the agenda. Is there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to have the minutes from the May 5th meeting fold for discussion.
Okay. Do I take, yes, should we take it, what do we do, take a vote on that? Okay. We're going to modify the agenda to poll 1.06, minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th, correct? For discussion.
Yes, I make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. So, any other modifications?
I emailed this, so I don't know if it's done because I can't see down further, to add the turf discussion item. So it is a modification, I don't see it there.
So modification to add the discussion item of turf fields?
Yes, please.
Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. Anyone?
Did you second? No, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So can we add the discussion items turf field? That'll be it, that's 3.02.
And I have one more modification with regards to the May 5th meeting, which talks about board governance matters in executive session. I have two problems with this. Board governance matters should not be in executive session as per the open meetings laws, section 105a through h. They need to be discussed in open session. It's also a misuse of public funds as we're paying an attorney to sit there without giving us legal advice. Rather, it's a way for board members to discuss governance matters which really should be in open session. So I would like to modify the agenda so that we can have a discussion about this and hopefully agree to no longer put governance matters in executive session and have it in open session.
Is that part of the discussion for the minutes of the regular meeting?
We can have it there if you prefer.
Technically, we're just pulling the vote out of minutes, so it's not a discussion yet, but still.
Dr. Adams, can you help me on this? I'm sorry.
So, Marliese, do you want it as a separate discussion item or as part of the minutes?
Can we have a discussion during the minutes or, it doesn't matter to me as long as we have this discussion whether it's appropriate or not to have governance matters in executive session.
Is that the primary objection to the minutes of?
There are several objections to those.
But is that part of it?
It's part of it, yes.
Okay. I think it would be appropriate to discuss it under the minutes at that time.
Okay.
Any other modifications to the agenda? Okay. And moving to 1.05, student report. I think Rachel's in the house.
(Inaudible). No. Yes, yes. Good evening, everybody. How are you? Good. So I walked in here and I knew that I would expect to see all of my fellow STIR classmates who have won awards at the SIT fair, as well as all of the young little STIR-to-be children because that is what you are. You don't know it yet, but you do. You will be STIR students, so don't worry. When you get to the high school, there's a cool program you can do with science research to continue your knowledge in science and it's an amazing program and I could go on and on about it, but feel free to talk to me. My name's Rachel Fisher. So that aside, congratulations to everybody. We just left AP week for the most part. I know there's going to be some makeups in the coming days, but for the most part, everybody is done with APs, which is very exciting and stress relieving and it's now schools just can keep on flowing like as usual. We're in the midst of spring week and today was Toons Tuesday at the high school. And today was Toons Tuesday, so people wore band shirts. Yesterday was Made in America Monday, so red, white, and blue. Tomorrow will be pink. Thursday is college apparel and Friday is extended lunch, so we'll have some fun outside and Mountie apparel day. Tomorrow, there will be, at the high school, there will be an assembly for the girls seniors, so everybody who's graduating next year, about the dangers after high school that they might face, such as decision making, date rape, that kind of harsh kind of stuff, but stuff that needs to be discussed. That's tomorrow. On Thursday, there will be our honors society induction and as a board member, I will be present on the stage and I encourage board members to come and see the arts in action once again, as well as any of you guys who would like to come for that. There will also be a science honor society induction, but that will be next Wednesday, May 27. I will be inducted into that as well. And then the day after that, Thursday, May 28, there is a spring concert. And then June 1st is our evening of excellence, which I believe is the scholarship recipients receiving their scholarships. If there's any questions? Nope? All right. Have a good evening. Thank you so much.
As you can see on the agenda, we have two recognitions, one for Eagle Scout and then the SIT awards recognition. And with the SIT awards recognition, it's of particular interest to me. It's perhaps my favorite school board meeting of the year in that, you know, it deals with science and your innovation, technology, the math, and it's something that I've always been fascinated with. My undergraduate degree was in environmental engineering, so it's, you know, of course of great interest. And then the doctoral degree dealt with data development analysis for efficiency and effectiveness, which may, you know, big words, but it doesn't mean a whole lot other than it was all based upon calculus that I had learned in high school and college that I ended up applying at a PhD level or an EDD level. So that was great, but to see the young scientists in here, the young mathematicians, I think is wonderful. And then the seniors and then some of the folks in between. I had attended the STIR symposium, it's probably been three or four weeks ago, and the projects and the presentations that the kids had, it was really amazing. I started, I came in kind of the back instead of the front where the seniors were, so I came in where the younger students were and I hoped they were the seniors because the quality of the work and the presentation was just truly amazing. And it's a tribute to the students, to the staff, to the parents, to be totally involved like that. So this is, for me, I spent, I don't know, an hour and a half or two hours just looking at the various presentations, asking lots of questions, which sometimes makes the kids feel uncomfortable, like maybe Rachel did. But I like to see how they think and then to see the senior presentations, and that was kind of a special part of the evening where the seniors went last and they had 15 to 20 minutes or so to go over their projects and it's really amazing what they've accomplished. And so for the youngsters out here, the elementary age kids, you know, we've got great curriculum, great teachers here, and you have great opportunities, so take advantage of those and no telling where you'll be someday. And one last thing, and I know you don't want to listen to me talk, but the top 10% students a couple of weeks ago when we recognized their accomplishments, I believe 25 of the 36 or 37 students had indicated they were going to be science, technology, or engineering majors. And I can't help but to think the exposure that you have to such a great curriculum here and to great teaching didn't help to excite you to get into those programs. So without further ado, I will recognize our Eagle Scout. Where's our Eagle Scout at? You know, the Eagle Scouts, they have to go through a lot of training and a lot of exercises to get to have that great distinction and I'd like Cameron to go ahead and maybe just describe a little bit about the project.
Sure. My project was building a wheelchair accessible sand table at San Bos for Chihuahua, which is a center for the designated new city. And it went really well. I'm from troop 21 in South Bend, great troop. And thank, thanks so much.
This year, 69 students from the Grand Central School District participated in the county-wide 29th Annual Science Inventions and Technology Exhibition, which was held on April 26 at North Rockland High School. And once again, our school district had the largest number of participants countywide. That includes not only public schools, but private schools and homeschool consortiums. We are very proud of each participant's achievements and the effort that is put forth on the research, experimentation, and completion of their long-term science investigations. Of the 65 awards presented at the exhibition, Grand Central Schools received 38, and those 38 awards, they span the categories of engineering, environmental sciences, mathematics, physics, inventions, behavioral science, computer science, earth science, medicine and health, biochemistry, botany, microbiology, zoology, and chemistry. Countywide, our students impressively earned the following awards. We earned honorable mention, first place, second place, and third place awards in the grade five through six inventions category. We earned honorable mention, first place, second place, and third place awards in the grade five science category. We were awarded first place in the grade six to nine science chemistry category. We were awarded first, second, and third place awards in the grade 11 science category and first and second place awards in the grade 12 science category. And I think that earns our students around. This evening, our Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Adams, would like to acknowledge the award-winning achievements of these students. To our young people, congratulations on your well-deserved performance. I would like to leave you with the same words encouraged to say at the award ceremony at the SIT exhibition this year. Always remember the difference between achievement and success. Achievement is the knowledge that you have studied and worked hard and done the best that is in you. Success is being praised by others, and that's nice too, but not as important or satisfying. Always aim for achievement. Congratulations.
Okay, discussion items 3.01, titled Field Testing.
Right, so I had asked for that to be added to the agenda, which it was, so thank you very much. And the reason why was because a lot of community members were asking me what's going on with field testing this year, what's happening, and then at the last meeting, there was a question about it where they reviewed how many tests. So I had sent out that email asking, you know, how does this potentially benefit our students? How does this benefit the district? What are the repercussions of opting out? And how is it that other districts are opting out? And so, Dr. Adams, do you want me to read the email that you responded to or do you want to summarize it or?
I think I'll go ahead and ask Lee Weber to summarize it, if that's all right.
We tried this year to take a fresh look at field testing. Field testing's been going on in the state for a very, very long time, so we tried to take a look at it with fresh eyes. And we first did that by consulting with our attorney and finding out what the legalities were on, were we required to field test. In the past, we were always told we were required to. We didn't necessarily follow up on that and look to see where it said we had to do that. The schools each receive a letter, the superintendent receives a letter that's very clearly worded that this is the expectation. When we looked into it with the attorney this year, it was determined that it does not appear in the commissioner's regulations that field testing is required, so therefore there's not a law that says you have to field test. We also consulted with a number of districts, both within the county and in other parts of the state, districts that had chosen not to administer field tests last year to find out if there were any repercussions or what the, any consequences that could have occurred from that. In everyone that we spoke to, it was determined that there were no repercussions. We could not find evidence of any district that did not offer the field test last year that had repercussions, so we didn't find any evidence of them. So based on that, those two factors, we discussed with Dr. Adams, the possibility of not giving them. So then it became an issue of what is the impact on our children? As was stated, I believe, in the public participation at the May meeting, the field tests are given to our students. We take the tests, we put them in a box, and we send them back. We don't look at the questions, we don't score them, there is no information shared back with us about the questions. So in that sense, there is no value to our students or our teachers. There's also different forms of the field test, so in any room, all the kids aren't necessarily taking the same field test. So there's multiple forms, so it's not even that they're looking at the same questions. So there is so little value, I would say that it becomes insignificant. The value in the field testing is that every question that appears on a state test has been field tested at some point. So by our not participating in field testing, it impacts the future of those questions on future assessments. It doesn't affect the children who take the field test, it affects children in the future because the questions will have had fewer other children to field test them previously. We felt that that wasn't a significant enough reason to administer the field test this year.
Sounds great. What percentage of districts don't field test? You happen to know that?
Absolutely. No, I don't know it. I do know that last year, there was another district in Rockland that did not administer them. I know that this year, there is another district, a different district in Rockland that is not administering them. And, well, the one from last year, last I heard, is going to do it this year. They're under different leadership, but I don't know that that was a final decision, so I don't want to speak for them. The other districts we spoke to were in Duchess, Westchester, and Long Island. And Potman.
It certainly sounds like a very diligent and very good process. Is this, so every year, we're going to reassess this? Is that how, what you plan in the future?
I hadn't thought about it that far or talked about it that far yet.
Because one of the questions that I was getting from the community was, well, when do we find out?
When do we find out what? Or not? We usually are notified within the month, within a month of receiving, of when the test is supposed to be given. So this year, they were in May and June, so we found out with about a month lead time.
Okay, thank you.
Just a small question, when was the solution, the decision made this year, the decision not to administer them?
Last week, maybe the week before? Last week or the week?
Very recent.
Last week, it was last week, yes.
Thanks.
Just a quick question. When you said that we receive the test in May or what have you, so some years we're not field testing or we're not choosing to field test?
Correct. And so, for instance, this year, we were chosen at the high school and that one occurs a little earlier, that one would have been in May. We were not chosen at all at the middle school this year. We were chosen at various elementaries and various grades for various tests. Those would have taken place in June. So every year, it's just some kind of random algorithm. It's not totally random, it is, there's a little bit of reason to it, not much.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have, I believe, in 3.03, turf field, entitled turf fields. I'm not sure. Come on.
Okay, so regarding turf, the first piece of information I need to make sure everybody is aware, and if they haven't checked their email, I have a printout here for them. I won't say Tom again. We received an email from a doctor, another doctor besides the statement we read on May 13th. This was from Dr. Philip Landrigan. He is a medical doctor as well as a master of science, as well as his postdoctoral fellow who has a PhD and a master of public health, Sarah Evans. They both sent an email appealing to our Board of Education and addressed to our Board of Education specifically regarding, basically saying, please do not use rubber chrome turf in your fields. So it was a very strong, you know, straight statement to us as a board. So attached to that was a lengthy letter that I just sent over. For those who haven't read it, everybody has it on their email, you can get hard copies. And besides the letter, which was very, very detailed and poignant, there was also some sort of a guide on different types of synthetic turf and the chemicals present in them. So it's like a consumer guide on synthetic turf. If anyone in the public is interested in, again, this testimonial or this information, we've made it our point that we're, you know, sharing information with the public and being transparent. I'm happy to forward those. I have a couple of extra printed copies, but, you know, I'm happy to forward it because we have an electronic file. Basically, Dr. Landrigan has also a research study that we could go back and look at. He cited some of it in the letter. It's not dry science. It actually, he has a PowerPoint online that you can find if you Google him. And the PowerPoint is made for the layman or a non-medical person to understand it, so it's very easy to follow. Sorry. Very, very simple. You know, he used it for some presentations, basically, so please go over to that. He is, you know, his position, his title is that he is in charge of the Children's Environmental Health Center at Mount Sinai School of Medicine. Basically combines pediatrics and public health together, so his expertise is very valuable. If you Google Philip Landrigan on turf, the presentation pops right up.
Amani, can you review what the center is?
What? Sorry?
Can you, can you review, so the center is actually part of the AAP?
Right, which is the American Academy of Pediatrics. So a very, very reputable agency that serves children and environmental and public health problems that affect child, children and youth specifically. This is their area of expertise. So it's at Mount Sinai School of Medicine and, you know, everybody resorts to them or refers to them for information. They're the Mecca of this area. We need to start formatting a plan as a board and working with administration, obviously, on where do we go next after all this information that we've been receiving. So a few ideas came up. Maureen was present and Marliese at the presentation that went on on Thursday. We shared some of the, Maureen forwarded the rest of the board some of the flyers that, you know, the handouts that were given during the presentation. It's all important information to really go back and read it and study it closely while we're trying to decide what we're going to use. Also, there was a mention and a very strong stand from that organization, from the speaker, about natural turf fields. And I know a lot of people will cringe about the idea of natural turf. There's the issue of playing in the rain, there's the issue of depleting the natural turf in that.
When you, I'm sorry, when you say natural turf?
Natural turf would be.
Are you talking about grass?
Would be turf grass, yes.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to. The term word turf, I didn't know.
We use turf.
A lot of everything.
So the difference.
Everything's turf, right, either artificial.
Yes.
Artificial versus natural.
So we had looked at different items. We had looked at artificial turf with organic infill as an option. We had also said that natural turf, which is grass that comes as, you know, rolled out grass and not seed on the ground, therefore immediately you have a field, so you don't require waiting, is a natural turf field. So that still should not be off the table, and especially for those who listened to the presentation. We were given an example with an East Meadow school district in Long Island that has had excellent experience with natural turf, purely natural turf. And their fields were described as better than the NFL fields. People go there to just look at them and learn how they've been able to maintain them. Given the laws in New York State, there's the Child Play Act that came out in 2010, for those who are not familiar with it, it prevented certain pesticides from being used, most pesticides, and reduced it to a very short list of chemicals that are allowed in daycares and schools to be used in grounds where children are going to be playing. So we're committed to that law, first of all. So people who are concerned about natural turf because of pesticides need to be assured we can only use what the law allows, which is a very limited list. In spite of that limited list, we were told that the assistants to the superintendent in East Meadow, his name is Mr. Patrick Pizzo, is very generous with sharing information about his success story and his, you know, staff's success story in producing this amazing natural turf field. I think it's very valuable for us to not rule that out yet and to definitely give it a serious consideration, perhaps invite him to speak to the board. We were discussing on the 13th possibilities of having some guest speakers that come and talk to us and answer our questions. He could be a good candidate for that. I'm more than happy to organize that we go to his district and take a look at these fields and see how realistic that is because a lot of people are ready to rule out that possibility without really studying it. There's also, since that law, that act in 2010 in New York State, so much free training available for school districts and facilities staff. So we need to start taking advantage of that free training, which again, Patty would on Thursday offered more of that. And, you know, we all heard her say, we'll come to you, we'll train your staff, you know, we'll show you how to maintain a natural field using, you know, organic materials and that short list that the state requires and still have great success. I think that's important, no matter what kind of turf we decide to use, because even our regular fields and, you know, the non-turf that's at the high school and elementary school have suffered, and many coaches as well, have suffered since that law came out because we haven't been successful in producing a beautiful grass field now that we have the limitations. the limitations. So I think let's look into that closely, take advantage of free training. Free material was available at some point, I hope it's still available, and talk to this district about, you know, their success story and whether we can have the same. One of the things she said is after a rainy game or a lot of abuse to the field, they have this mix with seeds in it that they throw out right away. They have it down to a science, and it replenishes, and it's constantly thick and beautiful. So let's not rule out, you know, natural turf yet. And then if we are looking, and we should be looking also, at the synthetic turf fields with organic infill, we need to get specs, we need to make the specs public, we need to look at material safety data sheets, make those public, look into them, and get expert advice from someone or an agency that's unbiased, not linked to the seller or the turf companies, completely, you know, neutral and scientific. So we need to work on that. So we talked about hosting some guest speakers, we could get, you know, toxicologists, we can get, you know, facilities people to talk to us. She said she would come back. If you guys choose to bring her, we can invite anyone else you wish. You know, I have a lot of contacts in the area, and I'd be happy to pursue them. Finally, Dr. Adams and I discussed the point of the current fields. We do not disagree about the fact that the current fields are deteriorating, as we know. And Dr. Adams expressed interest in hopefully having our current fields tested. So we need to pursue that as well, making sure that they're safe for the time being to play. And I would recommend that we test them as soon as we're done with playoffs, which is another week or two, that our kids are finishing up their season. Have some reputable agency come and do some air and soil testing for these turf fields. So that's all I have to say today. I really need everyone to get to work on this regardless of the vote today, whether it's a yes or no. Our work is cut out for us, we need to get going. Thank you.
I just want to mention one thing that I was trying, that I asked you about. So the Mount Sinai group that Amani is talking about is actually, it's the AAP Council of Environmental Health that set up regional centers in collaboration with the CDC. So these are your reputable people. And ours happens to be at Mount Sinai. And the person who sent us the letter is the professor who is the head of this pediatric environmental health center. And they are the ones that put out, you know, statements on behalf of the AAP Environmental Health, so the American Academy of Pediatrics. This is their thing that they've collaborated with, with the CDC. So this is a very important letter that we received from them, and these are really the experts that have no bias, they're not paid for by the tire company. In fact, probably for them to get funding is incredibly difficult because the NIH has no money to fund anything. So that letter is extremely powerful. And then I second Amani's point about either way, whatever the result of this vote is, we need to move forward and do our research, because either way, we're going to need to do our research anyway and have a timeline for when we're going to present this and make decisions.
One little item I forgot to mention is that we need the information from all vendors that carry turf fields, not just one or two. We need to really cast a wide net. They all have different products, they come at different prices. We need to look at, obviously, safety is first and foremost, then we look at cost, you know, differences, and then performance, you know, an athletic parent, so I care about performance. We also need to get input from all the stakeholders in the community. We need to talk to the coaches and get their input as well, and, you know, parents, children who play on these fields and understand their concerns, and talk to other districts that have put different types of products. We can't just listen to what the vendors say, but everybody and all stakeholders in the community, please.
I agree. Thank you, Amani and Marlies. Is there anything further on that topic?
Could I say a few things, President Falcone? Along the lines, I think, of what Marlies and Amani are alluding to, I guess I've spent maybe 44 or 45 hours the last 10 days researching the topic. It's something that I take very seriously in terms of the safety of the kids and the adults that are on the field, or fields, plural. And so, you know, just in thought of looking at the board meeting tonight, trying to provide a structure or framework for us to move forward. And so, in terms of a reporting mechanism, the board gets to decide the specifications and whether it's synthetic turf, what the infill is, or whether it's natural grass. But just so we all kind of have the same pieces of information, I've just kind of outlined, and I've just called it Field-Turf Replacement Feasibility Study, and just broad categories, the background information, trying to explain to anybody who looks at it and having this posted on our website and updating the information as we get it. But the first area, I think, would be background information. Explain what we have right now. We have two turf fields, when they were installed, what the composition is, and then the second major category, the health and safety concerns, of which we're alluded to on May 5th, May 13th, and tonight, and some additional information during the interim. And then perhaps breaking it down into looking at the synthetic turf. What are the perceived benefits of synthetic turf, the costs, et cetera, and then the infill options, the crumb rubber, the coated crumb rubber, the Nike grind that we've talked about, the thermos, plastic elastomer, the sand and Envirofill, the cork and coconut husk. But, so we have the synthetic field, the costs, including the maintenance costs, because some folks mistakenly believe that you put in a synthetic turf field, you don't have to do any maintenance to the field at all, and that's clearly not the case. Then also talk about natural turf. Amani alluded to it tonight, the grassroots environmental group, Patricia Wood had mentioned it, and also doing a very similar analysis with them. What's the cost to install, what's the cost to maintain, lifespan, usage considerations, timeline. The fifth major category, I would say, would be the expert input or speakers that would talk about it. And, you know, maybe people have different opinions about it, but so we can get independent experts. And then stakeholder slash constituent feedback. And then the last part would be next steps or recommendation. But with the stakeholder constituent feedback, I don't think that's something, or these steps that I've kind of outlined, and again, I just did it this afternoon, they don't have to be concrete sequential. They can be taking place simultaneously, like setting up some sort of structure to get stakeholder and constituent feedback, whether we have a hearing well advertised so that people can come out and speak their minds. Not a special board meeting, but an actual hearing so people have that opportunity, kids have that opportunity, coaches have that opportunity. And we get to hear from everybody and provide another opportunity or another medium so that questions can be submitted, so that we can be doing our work to try to obtain answers. You know, what synthetic crumb rubber? You know, we've used it because we're kind of, we've studied it a little bit, but maybe a lot of folks don't know what it is. And so, just to have that opportunity for people to either come in person at a hearing or even two hearings. I believe when NIAC did their bond referendum two years ago, two and a half years ago, they had three different public forums or at least opportunities, but it wasn't just about their turf fields. They had a lot of different projects that they were taking a look at. But I think it's very important to have the community involvement in this. And just, so I'm just, I'm looking at having a structure so that when the information comes in from May 5th, May 13th, May 19th, it doesn't get put in the trash can or put on this table. There's a structure, perhaps we do almost like an annotated bibliography or a bibliography or links or something and maybe categorize it, like if we're talking about health, safety concerns, the inhalation, the ingestion, the skin absorption, the heat on the field that was brought up previously, MERSA. So that we can do this in a very systematic, structured way so that people see that, maybe that generates a question, maybe it generates a question amongst board members, and then Kelly or I or somebody could go get the answers, or we have these questions ready for experts when they come to address the community. So I've rambled on for a length of time, but I just felt like I needed to get out some sort of structure and, you know, I'd be glad to send it out via email and it's just a framework, but, you know, get the input so that we have a structure, so maybe the next board meeting, you all say, yes, this is a structure that we want, and this is the process that we should follow. Just some thoughts.
Sounds good. Okay, so your thoughts are very similar to mine, so at least we're on the same page.
Please don't say that to my-
Yeah, no offense. And, you know, we'd like to have some, an opportunity to give input when you're making that structure so that-
Absolutely.
When we come to the table, we're all very comfortable with how it's-
And it's not piecemeal. We're all, we see what the process is, what the framework is, and then we're just filling in the spots, and then if we get it on the website so that people can look at it and then it's updated at a certain time, then everybody's seeing the same thing and maybe from different perspectives, but everybody sees the same information.
Some sort of a tentative timetable, because I know there's a concern out there regarding when we'll have this work done and who's going to be able to play, you know, on where, which field. So just to address also what we think is our perspective, I know things are never exactly on the same day, but perspective timetable where we hope to accomplish all that, you know, so that we can start scheduling speakers, et cetera.
Okay, that part. I was incorrectly thinking about timetable to have the fields done whether-
I meant that too, because, I mean, that's the question out there, when will they be ready and is this going to mean-
And that'll be dependent upon the decision that the board makes, because if it's a certain way, then it can be done quicker, if it's a different way, it might be longer. And some of the infill products, if we went the synthetic turf way, aren't immediately available. So there's several different factors there, so it's hard to pin down a timeline.
Right.
But if we can at least establish a framework and then discuss what timeline we need to have with the framework, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, great.
So you're going to email that to the board?
Sure. And it's just roughed out framework.
I do, I very much like the framework. I think it's good to get on board early and be systematic about it. But the framework, we can start that regardless of what the result of the vote is-
Yes.
Because these fields do need to be replaced.
Yes.
So that we can move forward with no matter what.
Right. Agreed.
Dr. Adams, do you still feel comfortable with the idea of getting the current fields tested?
I've had a number of parents raise concerns, but I've gotten an earful from different constituencies, some that are real concerned and some are like, what the heck are you doing, that kind of thing. And that's why I think if we can get accurate information out there, so everybody can see in a very transparent way what we're doing, I think's important. So I don't know, Amani.
My recommendation is that we finish the season, it's only another week or two, and that we do get, that we do get an agency to test them.
Yes, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think you'd indicated you would get me some names so that I could call. So if you have-
Absolutely.
Some reputable companies-
Absolutely, I'm happy to-
Or agencies, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public participation, 4.01, this is public participation on any school board business.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Kern. I'm a mother of two Montebello students, two Montebello students, yes, and work in the guidance department at the high school. While we sit in this room awaiting the hopeful passing of the budget, my thoughts move to the idea of commencement and how in a few short weeks, July 1st, and our new school year begins. The book will reset, and if the probability of incumbency rings true, then this table will be filled with familiar faces once again for the 2015-2016 school year. So much of the discussion this year has been about fiscal responsibility. At the candidates forum, many of the would-be board members cited fiscal responsibility as a goal for the district. And while I do agree and believe in fiscal responsibility, that idea struck me, because fiscal responsibility isn't a goal, but more of an expectation. It's the ladder we should use to climb to reach our goals. I know we have a strategic planning committee, and shame on me, Dr. Hayward, for never attending any of those meetings, and I apologize, and we'll make a point to try and get there next year. Yet I have been to many board meetings, and I think the discussion regarding where we will be in the next five years has been lacking. We've survived our fair share of financial issues, including a very, very public investigation of our human resource records, and two years ago, a daunting deficit. We made it through these struggles and can look to a bright future. And as a mother and an educator, I just wonder what that future looks like. I wonder, and talk to my husband about often, what are our goals? Although our academic program is still strong, we have made some cuts over the past few years. Should we relook at AVID at the elementary and middle school levels? How has the lack of the district-based summer school impacted our students who failed to achieve proficiency? And what else can we do to give our students the tools they need to be successful in life? I think the proposed budget is a good one. I emailed the Board of Education some time ago praising the proposed additional staffing to support elementary literacy, to address the changing standards for students whose native language is not English, and for the much-needed addition to the PPS staff. And thank you so much for responding to that email, I really appreciated it. Let's keep those kinds of discussions going. Let's ask those questions and talk about them at these board meetings. And I know, together, we can work on the ever-changing process of finding the answers and figuring out where our true north is.
Excellent.
Thank you.[1795.42]